Council meeting for July 20th, 2015. Can you please stand in congregation? Is Scotty here?
No.
Nathan, can you lead us, please? Including our thoughts and prayers with the families for the reasons, Nathan.
Let us pray. Father, we're thankful for the opportunity to be here tonight. Pray that you'd watch over us as we conduct business of the city. We thank you for how you've taken care of us and looked over us these past few weeks with the bad rain weather. And we pray that you'd be with those families and individuals that have suffered loss from the flooding. Pray that you would be with the families of those that were killed in Chattanooga. Pray that you would continue to watch over our country and just provide security and safety and help us to understand the different things that go on. Pray that you'd be with our children of this community, our next generation. Pray that you'd be with our mayor and the department heads as they conduct the daily business of the city. St. Christ, and we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Nathan. Motion, please.
Counselperson Smith.
Present.
Counselperson Zostovny.
Here.
Counselperson Wadsworth.
Present.
Counselperson Sellers.
Present.
Counselperson Webb.
Present.
Counsel President Gill.
Present.
Counselperson Julius.
Here.
Counselperson Owen.
Here.
Counselperson Samuel.
Here.
Let the record reflect, all nine council members are present.
Thank you. Minutes to be approved. We have the minutes for the regular council meet proceedings on July 6th, 2015.
Motion approved.
Second. Got a motion in second. All those in favor saying if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Got approval of the agenda. And remember, counsel, we are tabling two and three under the unfinished business. Do I have a motion to approve?
No.
What? I'll make that. Table in those resolutions. We didn't have the workshop yet.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion in second. Any further questions, discussion?
Do we have a time for the workshop?
No, we do not. All those in favor saying if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Claims to be approved. Heather. And before any of the council has any questions, Heather, did you make sure you were actually out? I left the claims with Chad.
Okay.
We had several stacks that were unsigned.
Okay.
Were those signed?
I will make sure that they are.
Okay. And also, counsel, we need to pull on page seven, the $25,000 for the Burns property maintenance. That requires a contract. So we can't pay that. So open the floor to the rest of the council. Do you have any questions?
The request for hand carry claim is also included in this, for a puppy's vehicle in this total that was originally.
I had a comment. With my understanding that the new folks that are focusing on cutting and maintaining our grass, we're also going to use fire stations. And there's claims in here for mowing for the fire stations, not by our own people. I just would like clarity on that.
Well, I actually made copies of those claims because I had a question for Scott. There's no contract in place for those, but I did have a conversation with one of the assistant chiefs, and he's supposed to be taking care of that.
And that's, you get that issue as they work, you cannot tell them outside companies or vendors, right? You have to have work, you have a contract in place, though it's only per claims, they won't answer.
Yeah. The second thing is Paul said, because of the other things that we've done, because we caught this when we were doing, going over the money, that they should be able to start mowing the firehouses because they should have time to do it. So it will not have to be paid.
Okay.
Is that, so you're, because there's no contract in place, you want to pull him too? Is what you're...
I was just asking for clarity. I'm not necessarily wanting to pull him. I just, it just seemed to me that I'm the one that happened to pay it anyway.
Well, that's another issue, Scott.
The company that's going out, it's my understanding they're firefighters. Does a conflict of interest need to be filed?
Yes, somebody's in the city.
Yep.
And this city, they have to file, that's their conflict of interest.
But then this is a service that's already been performed, so do we pay it or not? Do we pull it? Do we get a contract? Go ahead and pay it?
I would, even though, I mean, eventually, the service has been performed, which we are going to pay at this point in time, though, because you've got two issues. If there still needs to be a contract and a conflict of interest, I would pull at this time until all the paperwork is wrapped, just to see where the accounts will line up.
My question is about, it was on page two, thing I need to know. A third of the way down. Claim for $930 and $570.
One is for landscaping and one is for grass cutting. Is that what you're looking at?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything else?
That's all, that's all the questions I had.
If those three items are moved, I'd make a motion to approve.
Well, I'd like to get the total first, and then we, I'll get your second. Okay, I got, we got a motion in the second for the 656,311.84, correct, Heather?
I'm going abstaining.
Oh, abstain. Okay. We got two abstentions, so all those in favor, signify if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Heather. Report of the clerk.
Don't have any at this time.
Okay. Then we'll move on to our unfinished business. Heather Metcalf, an ordinance of additional appropriation, and there will be a public hearing held.
We had it last meeting.
Okay.
The amount that you all discussed at the finance committee meeting for the Vehicle for Building Commission was 23,500.
So is that what we're reducing this to?
Mm-hmm.
So I should make a motion to approve 2015 OR 32 on the last reading with the change of 35,000 to 23,500?
Yes.
And I'll second that.
We got a motion in a second. All those in favor, signify if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Heather. Moving on to new business. Les Merkley, Public Carrying Ordinance, changing the zoning map design to property locations, designation of properties, 13, East 10th Street, 13 properties.
I assume these are going to be tabled again, because I know there's an attempt trying to schedule a workshop with Andy and the, with NDOT and with Kipta. That's what the reason in reference to amending, amending the Falls Landing and the intercity road economic development plans.
Well, these are, I thought those were the ones that were in our planning and zoning meeting.
And we're at new business? We're in new business now?
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine. Let me get to that. Hold on just a second. This is a ordinance requesting the rezoning of some property. It comes before you from the Planning Commission, and it comes upon a favorable recommendation by a six oh vote. This is in reference to some property on 10th Street to zone it. And it's, it's multiple parcels that have various zoning classifications, and the developer is wanting to get it zoned as one classification. And I believe we have a representative from the petitioner and the applicant here. You want to come up?
Good evening. I'm David Nickleys, President Nickleys Development. I appreciate you folks allowing me to present to you this evening and talk about our project. We have contracted for...
Eighty acres?
Eighty-one point three.
Eighty-one point three acres, or eighty point three acres, at 10th Street on the north side of the road, just inside of, you have all the legal descriptions in front of you. We are planning to do a, I don't know if you, what's your format here? You want to know information about us? You want to know information about the community we're going to develop? Is that what you would like?
Yes, sir.
We've been developing for, oh, 25-plus years in the Louisville and surrounding markets. Some of our current projects, we, we developed Stony Brook South and Louisville Cherry Springs on Herschel Lane, Tyler Retail Development at Snyder and Tegusa Road, Valley Commons, Fern Creek Commons, Mount Washington Commons, just opened Versels Commons in Versels, Kentucky, which had, part of that project's the largest Kroger store in the state of Kentucky, 130,000 square feet marketplace. Typically, we're on the upscale. We like a lot of landscaping. We like signage packages that fit together. We have asked the city to consider doing a streetscape of that portion of 10th Street as you come into the city. We believe that's the new front door gateway to Jeffersonville. Downtown is going to be beautiful, but I think we're all going to be surprised of how much traffic that part of the road's going to carry, and it's going to be the east end front door. So we're excited about that, and we think we can add a lot of value and character to that as you come into the, into the city. So if you look at some of our, if you want to go to our website, you can see some of our other projects that we've put together, and you see the kind of landscaping and architecture. We'll have an architecture plan through the whole community. So it will be mixed use. There'll be retail. We're talking to several upscale retailers to anchor the project. We'll have new office space. Part of it be medical office, part of it be general office. We're talking about apartments and hospitality hotel as part of the community. And we usually keep architecture control of the whole project to make sure it fits together and, and I won't call it a village, but we refer to this project as Jeffersonville Commons, so it'll, it will fit together and be something that I think we'll all be proud of. That's really what we're all about. I'm glad to answer any question anybody has about us or the, our plans.
I have a question from the meeting the other night, planning and zoning.
Yes.
Did you meet with the neighbors? I know they were requesting, weren't they, a meeting with you all to discuss that little street back on Sellers Court?
Sellers. We met with the mate, the gentleman that was here. We haven't had a request to meet with anyone else.
You met with him?
We did.
And did you satisfy all his questions?
Yes. His, his question is, is if you're, there's not a map, but Sellers Court is on our east side, and, and the property wraps around Sellers Court. And he wanted to make sure we weren't going to be opening the tail end of Sellers Court up to our traffic.
He was concerned about that. Apparently, they got word that they, you were going to, so I think that's why there were so many here that evening. They got some misinformation.
And that's... We have no plans to open Sellers Court up.
It's too small. There's no way to open that street.
Now, there may be an opportunity just for actually to improve access for the folks in Sellers Court with the traffic signal at some point, but we won't be opening up the rear end of Sellers.
Any more questions for open up public hearing?
I know it's probably early in the process, but how much development would you see back there from like, an investment standpoint? Is it, I mean, 80, 81 acres is pretty large space.
Yes. I don't have that number with me, but our, the preliminary is over 40 million.
This has been something that's kind of been anticipated for, for some time now, so I'm glad, I'm glad that you're finally here, and we're finally going to make this step, this first step.
Well, thank you.
Any other questions for open up public hearing from council? Concerns? Questions? Okay, at this time, I'm going to open up public hearing. If there's anybody here that wishes to speak for or against this rezoning, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Okay, seeing none, I'm officially closing public hearing.
Make a motion to approve 2015 OR 34?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion in second to pass 2015 OR 34. Any further discussion, questions? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Merkley, we have an ordinance changing the zoning map designation of 2004, 2415 Charlestown Pike.
This is another rezoning that comes before the council upon a favorable, favorable recommendation from the Planning Commission by a six oh vote. This property's on Charlestown Pike. The applicant for the petitioner is Infinity Homes Development. They are asking for a down zone from a commercial to old city residential. And is there a representative from Infinity here? Come up and wood.
For the record, my name's Matthew Tool with Infinity Homes in Development, 122 Bowling Lane, right here in Clarksville, 47129. I'm more of a residential development, contrary to the client rep form who does mostly commercial. I'm typically known for that craftsman-style communities. I currently have one on Stonegate Manor out on Route 60 in Sellersburg. We took back from the bank, or we bought from the bank Reflection Ridge, and we kind of turned that into a craftsman-style neighborhood. This specifically will be very much craftsman-style with the hardy board, the front porch. There was some question about if there was going to be similar to Armstrong Farms, and we're not, that's not what I build. I don't build track homes. I build custom craftsman-style homes. It's very nichey, very unique. 27 lots, I believe, is what it's plotted for preliminary and what was approved. The walkability and the functionality of this, this new development is, is, to me, it's kind of what I think people are trending towards. Bring more of that home-style neighborhood back to where your neighbors can talk to each other and see each other, and you just don't go behind a closed door once you get home. So the garages are in the back on this specific development, and we actually put, there's a big gas line easement right through the middle of the property, and we plan on using that as some green space, maybe putting a pergola there with some off-street parking as well to help subside the cars parking on the road. Currently working with staff for development agreement. One of the conditions of the approval at the planning and zoning meeting was to make sure that we were in line with what the city wanted. So we're definitely working with Shane and the attorneys to draft that together. So I should have that definitely by final approval at planning and zoning. And then also the restrictions to make sure that we keep that scope of the development that I want to build, make sure we keep that uniformity throughout the whole process. So I don't, I'm not a developer where I develop and sell the lots. I'm a developer and builder, so it's going to be a turnkey development, development through me, instead of me subbing out or selling all the lots.
When you use the term craftsman-style homes, what does that term mean?
The best way I can describe it is we probably are all familiar with, like Norton Commons in Louisville. It's going to be not that big of a home, but it's got that hardy style with the gingerbread style facade where it brings some of that character, mix it in with some brick and stone. But it's more of that hardy-style painted concrete cement board that we use that brings that character back to life.
I've been to your development on 60, and each house is unique. They're not cookie cutter houses. They're really not.
What ballpark would they sell our product?
We're preliminary, 180 to 220 is about, and about where we're trying to sell our product at. You know, like, we could never do what Norton Commons does and sell them for 500,000 plus. Our market's just not here. But I feel that that 180 to 220 is a very good median price point that can attract a very good stable buyer to help keep that neighborhood quality, amenity, and, and the integrity of the neighborhood together, and it's people that can afford it, too. So I appreciate the...
This, this is a, this can, this is, this property is very near my property, I think it's in Con, or my...
My district.
My district, but it's actually in Conneys, but it affects my district. And, and I'm not one to be excited about a down zone or about old city residential. But really, but I did support this planning and zoning, and I still think it's the best use for this property. And, and based on some of the, the comments from my neighbors and from the information that he has, I'm sorry, I don't remember your name.
It's Matt. No problem.
Matt's provided that. I, I support this and think it could be a successful, successful development, and I encourage us to go ahead and rezone it as, as they applied.
Right. The neighbors were at the planning and zoning, and they had no exceptions to it because before it was commercial, it could be anything, and if you all remember the battle we had last time, they wanted to put in storage units there, and that did not go over at all. But no, they did not, there was a few questions, but nothing, they were not opposed to this project.
The concern was splitting the driveways. I think that was the only question.
I think a motion passed 2015.
We got to do a public hearing.
OR 35.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to officially open up the public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak for or against this rezoning? Please step forward and state your name and your address for the record. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to officially close public record and turn it back over to Counselperson Smith.
I make a motion to pass 2015 OR 35. Second.
Got a motion in second. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, signify if I was saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
I need that question, Matt. What, your timeline?
As soon as we can get through the drainage board, you know, make sure we satisfy them, and we get our primary approval, and then whatever other steps we have to take just to get all the necessary approvals, we'll start right away. So I'd like to, I'd like to be building homes before the winter comes, just so I can get them on the market for springtime.
Did you turn the arrow?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Chief Kavanaugh. We got two things with Chief Kavanaugh. We've got the advanced SWAT school, and then we've got the new vehicles, radio and equipment discussion.
For the advanced SWAT school, we're sending four of our newest operators to the school to be held in Louisville. It's a cost of $400 per person. We have that money in our budget. We've expanded the SWAT team. They attended the basic SWAT schools, so they'll need the advanced, and we're utilizing Louisville Metro for that.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Good evening. I came before the finance meeting on Thursday in request with, for some vehicles for our detective division and also a SWAT command vehicle and also a two-shift command. As we worked through the finance meeting, we came to the numbers, looking at the finances, came to the numbers of five Chevy Impalas for the detective division and one vehicle for the police, for the actual SWAT command, being one SUV, police Tahoe, which is a police package vehicle.
Chief Kavanaugh, please explain the condition of that, why we approve that one?
Uh, yes.
We found him on, he gave us the...
The public doesn't, though.
As you see, and I did pass some information in, was requested by Counselperson Sellers, to actually have a compositional breakdown, which has previously been requested of some vehicles. I wanted to make sure that I did fulfill that request. And you see in front of you, I listed those vehicles that are assigned to the detective division. As you can see, the mileage, and I'll read those off. A 2005 Black Crown Victoria has 102,000 miles. 102, 295, and that is a detective backup vehicle. A 2007 Green Ford Expedition, excuse me, has 153,000 miles, and that is a SWAT commander vehicle. 2007 Chevy Impala, which has 106,000 miles, that is a detective assigned vehicle. A 2007 Chevy Impala has 94,000, is a detective assigned vehicle. A 2009 Crown Vic Victoria, which is a detective assigned vehicle with 109,000 miles. A 2009 Crown Victoria has 100,000 miles, which is a patrol supervisor's vehicle. Another 2009 Crown Victoria has 115,000 miles and is a patrol vehicle. Let me note, both of those vehicles went down within the last 10 days, beginning of last week, and they've been repaired. A 2006 Dodge Ram 1500, which has 160,000 miles, it's an evidence detective vehicle for the evidence technician, which makes the transportation of back and forth to the lab in Evansville. That's up mileage that's showing so high. A 2011 Ford Taurus has 76,000 miles. That vehicle was rotated through the previous administration, back into the detective division to cycle out, which some of the other Impalas we have taken out of the fleet. 2007 Ford Fusion has 86,000 miles. Right now, that was rotated out with some previous problems. We were trying to get that back in service. That's going to be our new recruits that are going to be going to the academy. Right now, the vehicle's inoperable on the rack. It's probably going to be sent out for contract work as it looks at this time. It did not include mileage. We have the three Chevy Equinoxes that you did do the appropriation from with Lieutenant Grimm. He made the request. Those vehicles were out of the entrance fund, and then they were paid for by Lieutenant Grimm at that point in time, here within the last 90 days. So these are the vehicles that you asked and inquired about. This is where I'm trying to work within and move forward this time. Understand these vehicles come out of the Loet Fund. Understand it was brought to the attention of the meeting. We've had some other purchases of vehicles going on throughout the city. I understand and I comprehend that, but I do understand these, these vehicles here, we are sustainable and sufficient at this time to be able to make some type of quantitative purchases for these vehicles to work within the police department itself.
How many?
At the meeting, we spoke with five and one. I've since spoke with Chief of Detectives McGee, and I'm actually looking at, I was wanting to rotate out of the Dodge Ram. He's brought to my attention prior to, within the last little over year, we've had some work that was done on that Dodge Ram, it's the contract work that was invested, and telling we can go a little bit further with that vehicle and keeping that in the fleet. So I would like to actually back off if I could and go maybe forward, keep the same amount of money we were looking at in addition with the vehicle scope, but maybe do some, some working further back with the dealership and maybe go forward and to, to support that other patrol vehicle this time. Also, the other appropriations I was talking of was the equipment to go into these detective vehicles and also some radio equipment as well. Our detective vehicles here are, they're operating out of, out of portables, and I want to go, and we want to get the, the base mobile radios back into those vehicles. We want to start right now and try to get six of those in. Six of those would be approximately $23,100.
Got a question. Chief, so the sheet you gave us, there's numbered one through 10. Can you, I had number two is going to be replaced.
Yes, sir.
Three, four, and five?
Yes.
And then the, you had one more, I thought.
We would replace one of the, we would replace one of the Crown Vics is what I would actually want to do, and I would want to do a second, second. Initially, I came before, and I was asking for that fifth, but I've spoken with the Chief of Detectives. I was wanting to rotate out of that, that truck. He's saying we can go actually further. There's some other options right now that can be looked at and can be presented for administrator being there if I'm there in January, but we can pass that information along and set that up to be worked with at that point in time. So we can actually keep the Dodge 2006, I know it's showing 160,000 miles out of all the vehicles, but it does have the capabilities, and there were some invested funds in that with over the last period over the year that we can still keep that in the fleet and be sustained for a bit more time.
So, did you want to replace six and seven? Could I, I have, I'm showing number two, three, four, five, six.
I want to replace either six, we'll take either six or seven out, one of, one of those.
One of those. Then I, I show five. Is that where we're at? I thought...
Two, three, four, five.
You had the, actually the, I'm sorry, I wanted to do the four.
Okay. Oh, I had, yes. Okay. But I still show five vehicles, and I thought I heard you say six. Maybe I...
Initially at the, I'm sorry, initially there at the finance meeting, we were talking five and one. The other vehicle I actually did want to actually, I'm sorry, I wanted to actually take out was going to be the Dodge Ram, so I do want to take that back. Yes, you're correct.
So we're at, right now, we're at five?
Yes.
Thank you. So you're taking the Dodge Ram out?
I did know we're going to keep that in.
Taking it off the list.[1744.54]
Taking it off, off the list. We can actually, that vehicle, sir, actually can, we can still go further, further with that. And I do not want to try, I was gonna go into a, an Impala, but I do not wanna try to replace it out of the fleet right now.
And is, was there money in the?
Yes.
In the, for this?
Yes.
I was not at the finance committee. I apologize for that, so, okay. See, why do you think that Dodge Ram is, you wouldn't keep it? It's got so many more miles. Is it 'cause it's a truck? It lasts longer?
It's, you know, that's not out. The evidence technician, he's there. He's usually, he's picking up, or he's transporting, and the mileage, and we've had some work that was actually contracted, did out on that. It had to go further in the city garage. They actually feel, and the officer driving that vehicle feels that actually it can go for a period more time. It can make it into the next batch of vehicles. So reassessing the situation and looking at what we're dealing with right here now, and after speaking with you, we can make some things work, reassessing it, and.
I appreciate you doing that, and, and going back over and reviewing it, so thank you. And then we can discuss the other needs during budget workshop.
Okay.
What action do we need now?
Can I have the bond approval for the?
Just a motion.
It's gonna be on the transfer? It's gonna be on the transfer. He's just explaining it, so.
Can I ask a quick question? So are you, instead of the five-one, which was the five Impalas and one Tahoe, correct?
Yes.
You're going to four-two?
Three-two.
Three-two, okay. I'm gonna double check, 'cause we had four-two.
Sorry.
Cool.
All right, so is that all? So then really, we don't need to take any action now if we got on the transfer, so. So does anybody have any more questions before we move forward?
All right, thank you.
Okay.
I'm sorry, there was one more issue that I wanted to bring up. We lost that narcotics detective vehicle. We had an entrance claim back on that. That came back through the general fund. I presented that in the council meeting, and that was $14,262.80. I'm making a request for that to be transferred into the police department budget, and we're looking with the narcotics division to put them into a, a new program, a government program. I don't wanna go fully into detail. I brought that into the finance meeting, initializing and starting the program. The investigators in themselves, working with asset forfeiture, they'll be responsible for maintaining this, this program. And it's utilized through with the state of Indiana. It's, it's a very good valuable tool.
Heather, do we have that addressed tonight, too?
Yes.
Thank you.
I think you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Did you all vote with the approval?
Yes, it was approved. I just need to initial it. So Heather Metcalf, an ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department.
I'll be quick. I know you all are hot. The first one is the transfer that starts with the 42,000. And that is for, we are reclassifying some things in the fire department, like when you get the new hires, and they have all the tanks and the more extensive, I don't know if they're all called.
Help her out, chief.
Not a t-shirt, not a pants, not socks and shoes, but we're talking bigger gear.
Yeah.
And that's why we're moving it more to a Capitol Hill instead of a supplied-type uniform line. Yes, that's what that's for. The Vising Park construction is for nets at Worley, that 5,000 there, and the 13-9. That's just to get it all into the right category. We wanna get it all into the improvements account. And then the animal shelter was brought up at the finance committee meeting.
And all of that stuff is just?
Just to get it in the right place, so she can spend it, yeah.
I make a motion to approve 2015 OR 36 on the first and second reading.
On second. Okay, I got a motion and a second, pass 2015 OR 36 in the first and second reading. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Heather, and you're still up. You've got an ordinance of additional appropriation.
The first three are what Chief Kevinall just spoke up. The parks advertisement is for the what-to-do-in-Jeff flyer, and then the span neuter one is so that they can, it's just appropriating future cash that they will receive by the end of the year.
Motion to approve on the first and second, OR 37.
They got a motion, the second passed 2015 OR 37 in the first and second reading. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Heather Metcalf, an ordinance transferring certain funds within the same department.
That one is to pay for the, I sent out an email last week about the $4 million ban that's due in July of 2016 for the Vising Park. So this is for the 2 million out of the general fund to pay for a portion of that. And then the next ordinance is also referring to that, too, that moves, that, I don't know if you wanna do it all at one time, or if you wanna do something separate, 'cause it's all, so 2 million out of the general, 2 million out of edit, and then the million dollars that was appropriated for, I guess it would leave a half a million from the general fund, and the other half from the Cume Capital Improvement Fund would go into the new parks fund that's called the Worley Construction Expansion and Parks Projects, and that would be appropriated by the 200,000 for contract services and 800,000 for improvements.
And as you, as president, will you please explain this on the public house?
Sure.
Sorry.
What this does is, we have a $4 million ban, which is a bond anticipation note, which is debt for Vising Park, for when we completed the Vising Park project. So we owe that July 17th, and if we pay it off before, the bond has to be issued. We save a bunch of money in interest, as well as issuing costs. And that was the intent of the council and the parks authority from day one. So this would, is the process of paying off $4 million worth of debt. It also allows for a million dollars to be available to finish the Worley complex, finishing, adding additional parking spots there, a final coat of blacktop, and also to build a building with four concessions and locker rooms. That's what we're doing.
Thank you. So even though we heard this all together, we do have two different ordinances, though. One is a transfer.
Yes.
In the same department, and the other one is additional appropriation.
Yes.
I forgot to, when we were doing all this very end, because it's all advertised, I did make an error. I forgot to put on the agenda the second ordinance for additional appropriation, so. 'Cause we had them all come in at 4:30.
Yeah.
And that was my error. So do I have a motion for, I guess would be the first 38?
The, the transfer.
Transfer of this.
Motion passed 2015 OR 38 in the first and second reading?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to pass 2015 OR 38 in the first and second reading. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries.
Proceedurally? Yeah, procedurally, do we have to add the 6A?
Yes. And that was my error, 'cause we advertised everything together, and when I was.
I would, based on the clerk's error, I would make a motion to add 6A additional appropriations to the agenda.
Okay, I got a motion and a second to add 6A of additional appropriation to the agenda. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. So now that it's added to the agenda, do I have a motion to pass it?
Motion to pass 2015 OR 39 in the first and second reading.
Got a motion, a second to pass 2015 OR 39 in the first and second reading. Any further discussion on that one? Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Heather.
Not done yet.
And Heather, you're still up for the budget calendars for department budget hearings with council.
Yes. Patty's gone. If we can get an okay from you all, then we will schedule those with the departments. I would like to add to my scheduling of the departments that half of their time is to discuss their budget. The other half is for council questions, so they don't think that they have the whole time to talk without having questions.
And Vicki, I know we had, you're down to two in your office. You're okay with these dates for men, to take in the minutes?
Patty, you wanna do both of them?
Yeah, let's, let's show the ones that are actually the budget hearings, okay? 'Cause we've got the council meeting on the third, which is normal, and then the finance committee on the 13th. The first, and then we got the council meeting on the 17th, so those are taken care of. So then, the 24th at 5:00 PM is when we'll start.
Not, oh, I got the wrong year on there. That's why it says Friday. That's really a Monday.
What I thought.
See the year on there? I did.
She made an error, too.
I made an error. That's a Monday.
Monday, August 20.
The date, the 24th is right, but don't go back in time to 2001. Apologize, I made a mistake.
Quite all right, Matt.
We're all human.
So the 24th starts at 5:00. Wednesday, the 26th will start at 5:00. Thursday, the 27th will start at 5:00. Wednesday, September 2nd, 5:00. Thursday, we've got 5:00, but basically what that is for is for the council to have their final, that'll be you all to decide, I guess.
Like a wrap-up of, and all the other funds that you appropriate.
Okay. That'll be the third. Tuesday, September 8th. Since Memorial Day's the 7th, we need to move the council meeting to the 8th.
Heather, is, is it your, your plan or the expectation to get us the budgets prior to the meetings when we look over them?
Yes, yes. Would you like them on the, the third, which gives you quite a long time to look at them, or would you rather have them at the council meeting on the 17th?
Sooner the better for me, just saying.
Actually, I don't know if I can get you to them on your third. It might have to be the 17th. I shouldn't have asked that question, sorry.
Just, just whenever you have.
Yes, I will.
In advance, please.
Yes.
Thank you.
Sooner the better.
Yes.
And is there a, is there, for, for each night, can we know who's coming up for that night?
Yes.
I was focused on the first. Thank you.
And I think what was discussed in the finance committee is the council will start on the 24th at 5:00, and that's for you all to kinda do what, you all discuss your guidelines, what you all wanna do, you know, things like that. And then 6 o'clock, engineering will start.
And we thought make one major department a night, rather than too many at once.
And all these workshops are open to the public, and I highly encourage the public to attend.
At times.
Does anybody have any conflicts with any of these dates?
Nathan?
It's looking like you.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna check on my calendar, 'cause I'm afraid that I'll get called out for something else, but I will check tomorrow.
Okay.
There's definitely some conflict for me, but, you know, that's how it's always gonna be midweek, so please move forward, and I'll keep in communication with everybody.
Well, hopefully, with getting this stuff way in advance, if you have any questions or concerns, you can address those and send them my way, so we can address those in the workshop.
Thank you.
Are, are you available on that Monday for the parks, or is that one, we tried to schedule that one on Monday.
That's the week that we're doing budgets for our company.
Oh, lovely, yeah.
And I'm in Columbus the whole week, but I'm not sure if it start, I think our event starts, I'm not sure, it's Tuesday to Thursday, or Monday through Thursday. They, the department just said block off that week, so I'm not sure what the dates are yet. So I know I won't be here for sure during midweek, Wednesday and Thursday, I won't be here.
So Ed, if you check, and you can't be here for parks, at least meet with Connie and myself, so we can go over that with you, so.
Will do.
Know what's going on, okay. Any other conflicts or anything, so we can go ahead and set these in stone, have Scott advertise what he needs to advertise, and the meeting change for the September.
Before the workshop be here, so we will need to schedule this.
Right. It's scheduled. All right. I guess we're good on this schedule, and thanks, Heather.
Thank you.
Do we have a city council attorney report tonight? Do we have any department heads here that wish to speak?
The only thing I wanted to mention, Lisa, was the, we had the three participants in the World Police and Fire Games.
Oh, he's stealing the thunder.
Yeah. I told Matt about it. We had three participants in the World Police and Fire Games participated a couple weeks ago, and we brought back two golds and one silver. They were Josh Stith, Jason Wiesnauer, and Amy Wolf. And Amy set a world record in the bench press.
Wow.
For the history of the World Police and Fire Games, which is pretty big. I mean, that's a, since the games, and right here in Jeff, she set the world record on bench press. I think it was, what was it, 270?
It was 245.
245. But.
You know, chief, that's an awesome representation of Jeff. I'd like to see if we can't coordinate with you, and maybe the city clerk. Maybe we could do something here at the council meeting. I don't, some sort of a recognition, because that's an awesome representation of our city and our department.
And I, I think that Josh, he got a gold and a silver in two types of wrestling, but last year, he got a gold as well. Is that right, Joe?
That's right. It's two years ago.
Yeah.
They, they train year-round for it.
But it's a pretty big deal.
Five medals now that we've got.
I'm, I'm training to run the high hurdles for the next one.
I would like to coordinate that, though, chief.
I will get something together to get the three of them here for you guys to recognize two weeks from now, maybe. That's your next meeting.
Okay. Appreciate that. Thank you. Man, that's awesome. Okay, public comment, which, I received the public comment a little late, so I didn't realize we had two that signed up to speak on 2015 OR 32. Okay, all right. Josh Rodriguez, is he still here? Okay. And did Susan sign?
Oh, I didn't wanna say. I just signed it. I don't wanna say anything today. I think Josh is gonna say it all. But if he's not here, I will. I'll call. I'm not shy.
He dumped you.
He dumped you.
You're on your own.
I'm, I'm on, okay. I'll come up. I think I'm doing this right.
Okay, well, this is what I got from Josh. We want to thank you all for the money. I don't even know how much Josh asked. 6,000? Oh, okay, okay. Well, see, I would ask for 12, but anyway.
You're getting sick.
Okay. But anyway, we want to thank you all for the 6,000, because the neighborhoods really need it, and it goes for a really good cause. It helps us get out there, you know, we can meet the new neighbors, and fight against drug and crimes, and keep everybody in a big league. So it's good, so thank you all for helping.
I sent the schedule out to council, but I'm gonna resend that, just so you have it up in your email, so everybody knows, those that aren't hosting it in your neighborhood. The council, more that you can get around to, support our neighborhoods. I think they appreciate that.
Oh, yeah, that would be, that would be great. There's more we could, they, they can see you all out there.
Say the date, please, for the record, for the national out.
It's the 4th of August.
And they're all at the same time, from 6:00 to 8:00?
Yeah, 6:00.
And we have, what, 17 neighborhoods participating? 17 or 18?
About 17 or 18, I believe. So, okay, well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on then to council comments. Councilperson Smith.
We had talked about setting a, a meeting or discussion up earlier about.
Pass street?
Yeah, I have to pass. Let me think about it for a minute. There was something we was gonna get a meeting set up for, and I don't remember what it was now.
I'll come back to you then.
Okay.
Okay.
No comment.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, I have two. And this is from Mr. Merkley and Councilperson, if you can remember to do this Wednesday. Evidently, my street did not get put on for closing for National Night Out, Bishop, and it's just that small, it really only affects my neighbor, and because the fire truck parked there, and the kids were surrounding it, so that could be added if it needs to be to the Board of Public Works on Wednesday. That would be good. And then the second thing that I have is the parks, we need to have a special parks meeting this week to discuss some maintenance issues.
That's what it was, Friday.
Friday at 8:30, so, in the morning, so everybody needs to be up bright and early. What time again? We can take, can, can you take notes if?
No, no, no. Well, it's parks. You can do it for parks authority.
Parks is Heather. Parks authority.
What time is it again?
8:30.
We gonna do it here?
Yes.
Well, here's a.
You gonna be on Megan?
That meeting needs to be off.
Well, can we, can we meet up in the mayor's conference room? Should be.
If not, we got Fannie and Zonie's conference room.
Dunkin' Donuts.
Or Dunkin' Donuts?
Yeah. Yeah. We can just post it.
Oh, I got you, okay.
I recorded on my cell phone. They don't have it in Waffle House.
Our room's not big enough.
Did you have anything else, Councilperson Sellers?
Yeah.
Councilperson what? Councilperson Smith, did you have anything?
Connie hit at 8:30, I wanted, we talked about that, and I wanted to bring that up.
I just want to make sure you didn't have anything else. Okay, Councilperson Julius?
I got a couple things. At our last council meeting, I told everyone that I was gonna try and reach out to OneSI and try and come up with a new format for tax payments. And I have had a couple of good meetings, a lot of phone calls with them. Hopefully, at our next council meeting, and I will get it on the agenda for us to discuss, but we're really coming up with, with something that is gonna be on a point system, and it will, it'll allow us to grade qualifications, if you will, by a point system. What I did is I, with the help of Ms. Conlon, we, we came up with six other municipalities that have kind of a grading scale, so that everybody that comes in isn't treated the same. If a company comes in that's bringing 500 employees and a $50 million investment, is looked at a little bit differently than somebody bringing two employees and a million dollar investment. So we're, we're working real good with that. Hopefully, I'll have an outline to show to you. But I, I think it'll give us the opportunity to maybe even give more of an incentive to larger companies or somebody that's bringing more to our area. So, once, we should have a format in a couple weeks, and I will even try and get that to you, the format that we're looking at, so you can look it over before council meeting, you know, a little bit of time. The other thing that was brought to, I've, I've had a couple of people tell me that some of the city vehicles are not marked. And we have an ordinance, I think it is, oh.
And I sent that ordinance to Bobby.
Yeah. It is ordinance 2007 or 45. And what we need to do is make sure that our vehicles have placards on them, and they're all, they're all marked for city usage. The other thing that kind of goes with that, I think we all get phone calls on people using city vehicles for personal business. There is, there is actually a guideline that tells you that you can't use them for anything other than city vehicles, or for city purposes, so.
Did you find an ordinance that states that, that they have to have that 1-800, How Am I Driving sticker?
I didn't find that.
I don't know if we're still with that company, so, because that was, that was something that we.
That may have been a subcontractor. The only thing that.
The other safety guy.
That was Dominic.
Dominic brought it up, and it was just a sticker they put on to if it was reckless or seemed where it shouldn't be, but I didn't know, went to a company, I thought it was, I didn't know who it went to. Council president, I think.
Yeah. Well, it plainly, it plainly states in here that there's no personal use of vehicles at any time. So, anyway, if somebody brings that up to you, if there is an ordinance on file.
But that's excluding safety vehicles, though.
It is, it is.
I just wanted to let the public know that.
No, no, I'm not talking about.
And they're not supposed to be taking them across state lines either.
No, can't cross state lines. So, the other thing that we have, we have noticed is, there's a lot of our equipment sitting on job sites at different times. And one of the comments that I made to President Gill was, maybe we should discuss labeling our equipment by what department it is for. Like, if we have a track hole sitting on a job and it's for sewer or construction, maybe we should identify that. Because what happens is, we know that some of the drainage crews are being pulled off to do other projects. And I think, I think if we can identify the equipment and where it's being used at, then that'll eliminate a lot of that, or some verification needs to go on by why it's on such and such job. But I think that the storms that we had a week ago Sunday, it really pronounced a lot of drainage issues that we have, and we've got a lot of drainage crews that aren't working on drainage projects, and they're being pulled off. We haven't identified why they're being pulled off, but they're not on drainage projects. And, and that needs to be, I think if your, if your label is on the equipment on what department it is, it'll certainly help with that, so.
Well, that would go along if they have a pickup truck, they would have the city logo, and it would say, Street Department, Construction Crew, Drainage Crew, or something.
Exactly.
Accountability, more than anything.
That's exactly right.
Not that complicated.
Councilperson Owen?
I didn't have anything myself, since the chief got our three folks that competed, but I think Mr. Hurt wanted to, to speak, and he's not exactly a department head, but I wanted to defer a few minutes to.
If y'all would just allow me to speak for one second?
I'll allow it.
We have a retired firefighter, Jimmy Van Gilder, he's, he's very sick right now, and he is undergoing some very, very costly treatments, that, a lot of which he's required to pay out of his pocket. And I reached out to the Caphammer family, who run Buckhead and Rockies. A week from, from today, they're going to be donating 10% of all proceeds at Buckhead to Jimmy Van Gilder. They're actually gonna donate it to the union, and then we're gonna donate it to Jimmy Van Gilder. So, spread the word, pack the house, we'd love to see everybody there. A week from today, uh, next Monday.
Oh, next Monday.
The 27th.
Is there, is there a timeframe?
All day.
Do we need to identify that?
I think, I think ideally, you let them know why you came in, but I think, the end of the day, they pull the slip, whatever they've sold.
You're gonna put out some kind of.
I'm gonna get some flyers together tomorrow, I'm gonna get with Tom Caphammer. I will, I will.
Either that, or put it on your union's Facebook, and let us all share it.
Sure, I'll get them, I'll, I'll reach out to y'all and get them out. I'm gonna post them all to firehouses, I'd love to really get a great turnout.
And if I can have a few of those flyers, I like to help spread the word.
Sure, I appreciate it. Thanks for letting me speak, yes.
Email it to me, so we can get on their Facebook page, and we'll go saw.
Okay, great. All right, thank you all very much.
That's all.
Councilperson Samuel?
We had some vandalism to the flood wall art.
Yeah.
At least, I'm told five panels. It wasn't severe, as far as marking up the whole thing, but it was on different pictures of each. We're in the process of trying to identify if we can remove, it was spray painted, trying to remove the spray paint without removing the paint below it. And if, if that doesn't work, then it's gonna be more costly to try to have it repainted like it was, potentially.
If I remember way back, and that was back on my first term, there was supposed to be a coating over that, because that was one of my questions, to protect that in case that happened, because I said, you know it's gonna happen eventually, took a long time.
I thought they said you were to apply the coating.
No, not me, the guy, that was part of his cost, and they were quite costly. So, hopefully, that's what happened.
Hopefully, they did apply that, and I should have an update for you, on this one side, we know for sure. And, but we, we will need to come up with the dollars to, to do the maintenance on that at some point. And I have a, an ordinance coming up that deals with funding for arts, and we'll talk about that, that addresses stuff like maintenance, and matching dollars for grants and things like that, but I just wanted you to be aware of that, that we did have that vandalism. And I was at a meeting today, along with fellow councilman Owen and Julius, regional cities meetings. It was, actually was, it was attended by most representatives, I mean, from every city or town, across, what, Scott, Floyd.
Harrison.
Harrison was there.
Washington.
From our region, a lot of elected officials about this new initiative, and there's, we can talk about that or debate, debate that, but one of the things that it was, the big push was, or they commented, the state folks said, was the biggest issue they're addressing is the attraction of people into this, to live here and to stay here, even more so than, they said that goes to economic development. And so I kind of want to tip my hat to, to Councilperson Z, because our parks, he's, he's really been pushing our parks, and I know he gets some criticism over that, but that's what the state's pushing right now. They said those cities and regions that are really focusing on parks, and also art.
Quality of life.
Quality of life type issue, said that's what retains people. And they've done these studies and all that, so I was proud to be sitting in the meeting knowing that we're at least having some attention focused on that in our areas. And, so anyway, that's just a comment, that's all I have.
I had sent out an email on the Greenway, and unfortunately, I didn't get any responses back. So do we want them to come to a council meeting and do a little presentation update on the Greenway, or just submit the claim?
Just submit.
Okay, we can do that. And then unfortunately, we haven't been able to, I've been working with Andy, trying to schedule this workshop, and I was hoping that we could get one scheduled, but we just couldn't get, there's so many conflicts and trying to get everybody, and so then we were trying to shoot for the next council meeting, which was August the 3rd, and Kathy Eaton with NDOT is not available. I'm waiting, I still haven't heard back from her today, I got an email to try to let us know some dates, if before that, or, so as soon as I hear anything, or if Andy hears anything, we will get an email out to you all, so keep you posted on that. And also, I've had a lot of employees that are concerned that, I'm thinking we might have to get a couple councilors, start wrapping our heads around this, but we've got a lot of good employees that have been with the city, you know, 20 to 30 years, and they're maxed out. We have our salary ordinance, and, you know, we've got some hardworking employees. I wasn't, I didn't realize that a lot of them that work out in my mail elements, 24, you know, for the, like, parks or street department.
Sanitation.
Sanitation. They have been ideal employees for 20-plus years, and I think that's something that we need to
Revisit.
revisit, and maybe have some conversations with Kim, I know Kim's been out on vacation. Is she back yet?
No, she just left.
She just left? Okay. So that's just something that I wanted to throw out there, to see if we can start some conversations about that, to see if there's, if there's anything we can do, but, you know, when you've got hardworking people that, you've got at least cost of living, you gotta take in account, where some of them haven't got a raise or any kind of anything in the past four years, four or five years, so it's just something to.
They should have gotten the bonus that we gave them, because everybody gets that.
There, yeah, whatever.
Well, I'm not sure it's that many.
We need to look at it.
We could visit it.
It's food for thought, it was something that was brought to me, and I said I will, I will start those conversations.
I don't think it's that many, no.
Uh, Councilperson President Gill?
Yes.
I never received a claim from the Red Cross.
To the table?
For the table. Okay, I'll contact her tomorrow then, thank you.
When is that, Gala?
I don't have the dates in front of me, can you remember when that date was? Yeah.
August 6th, I think.
August 6th.
Thank you.
Thursday?
Okay.
I did want to add, I, I'm, we don't, I don't think we need to have the Greenway come and, and give a presentation, because we've had one recently, but if you missed it, in the News and Tribune today, they did put out a pamphlet that kind of shows what they're, what they're looking to move towards, and it's, it really takes the Greenway project to the next step, the Greenway 2040 project, it's something that they've been working on for the last few months, and if you missed that, make sure to, to look at it and check that out. It, it's, some of the, some of the renderings and conceptual ideas are really impressive.
That's all I have, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'm actually moved.
Being adjourned, thank you all.